Good evening. Welcome, everyone, to Titusville City Council Meeting on July 23, 2019 at 6:30 PM. We have a quorum. I'll call this meeting to order. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please join me in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item is approval of minutes. Somebody like to make a motion?
Move to approve the minutes of the meeting of July 9, 2019.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or corrections? I hear none. All those in favor say yes.
Yep.
Any opposed? Like sign. Passes unanimously. We have no special recognitions and presentations. Boards and commissions.
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council. Before we get to Boards and Commission, the staff requests that we move item, Agenda Item 9G to after petitions and requests.
Do I have a motion from Council to that effect?
I'll come on.
I'll move, sir.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Same sign if you're against. Passes unanimously. Next item, sir? Oh, well, the same item. Boards and commissions?
Yes, sir. This is the North Brevard Commission on Park and Rec. And member Dr. Vernon Clay has submitted his resignation effective July 8, 2019. His term expires on August 31, 2020. Currently, there are no other applications on file for your consideration.
Yes, ma'am. You go right ahead.
I've moved to accept the resignation of Dr. Clay with deep regrets and love appreciation for the work he did.
And we have already discussed a letter being written and so forth, so that will be part of the motion, I assume?
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Like sign. Next item, please.
Yes, sir. The Board of Adjustments and Appeals. The terms of regular member Sid Chehey, Earl Johnson, Jr., and alternate member William Kilpatrick expire on July 31, 2019. Regular members Chehey, Johnson, and alternate member Kilpatrick have expressed their willingness and desire to continue to serve on this board as the City Council appointees and have requested reappointment as regular members for two years to expire on August 31, 2021. In addition, alternate member Kilpatrick has requested to continue to serve as an alternate member with his term to expire on July 31, 2019, if he's not appointed as a regular member. There are no other applications on file for your consideration.
I will accept the motion.
I'd move to appoint regular member Sid Chehey and Earl Johnson as members and William Kilpatrick as alternate member.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yep.
Anyone opposed? Like sign. Passes unanimously. Next item, sir?
Yes, sir. The Tyco Airport Authority, Mr. Derek Kleins.
Oops, sorry about that. Tyco Airport Authority, Mr. Derek Kleins submitted an application and has expressed his willingness and desire to serve on the authority. His application is part of his pa- of your packet. On July 5, 2019, Mr. Roger Molitor submitted an application and has expressed his willingness and desire to serve on this authority. His application is also attached. Earlier today, we received another application from Ben Cheve. And Council, you will have to determine if you would like to view that. And in order to do that, you'll have to table this item again.
Okay. I would recommend that we postponed it once, and that was because it was a couple days short. This is two and a half weeks or so, and then it would be another two weeks before we get somebody appointed. So I think in this particular case, we've gone as beyond what we normally do, and I would recommend not doing that.
Do we need a motion for that?
I don't know. Do we need a motion?
Yes, attorney.
Do we need a motion not to do something?
No, sir.
I didn't think so.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay. Whoever this applicant, I don't know if he's here or not, but apologize, but we really do need to get this one appointed. If an applicant would like to come up and speak, you're welcome. I don't know if both of them are here. I see one. Would you like to speak, sir?
I don't believe I need to.
Okay. You did last week, so it's fine. Member Nelson, is that from before?
No. It's a new one.
Oh, go right ahead.
It's a new one. I did get an email basically saying Mr. Cheve was applying. Mr. Molitor applied, and he was technically 24 hours late, but he also, that date that he should have applied was the 4th of July. So to me, that's, there's a little bit of difference. This is somebody who's applied this morning. I did spend the last couple of weeks considering Mr. Molitor's application and Mr. Kleins' application, and both are just wonderful individuals, very well qualified. In the end, my thought was that Mr. Molitor has been out there for many years.
For the record, it's Malator.
Malator, excuse us. There's an attorney, Malator. But anyway.
He's not an attorney.
Malator has been out there for a number of years and has a plane out there, and so for that reason, I would suggest that we appoint him.
Is that a nomination?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. You go right ahead.
You know, it's really, it almost could be a second if we're to that point, but I did the same thing, and I think we, it's really nice to have two nominees. It tooks, I had to take some time to separate them. And in the end, I think the quality is, we'd be great with both. But the difference to me is that Mr. Malator has been a pilot out there since 1972. And, you know, you know the inner workings. You know what's needed, and I appreciate that. So I would either second or just in discussion say that I too think that Mr. Malator is the direction I'd like to go.
Okay. So you're making this?
If you have a motion, then I'll second.
Okay. We have one more speaker. Member Jordan?
Yeah. I had a concern, and, you know, sometimes you all use it. I'm the new guy on the, on the block. Some of you use it this time. I'm the new guy on the block, and I was a little concerned about the third applicant, because it did come in late, and I didn't want us to start just moving things on, because if we do something like that, then the next time, there could be someone else next week and in two weeks and said, okay, I want to be part of it, too. So I apologize to you for not having the application in on time, because I think you probably do a good job also. But actually, Councilwoman Nelson took my thunder, because I was going to nominate Mr. Malator also, because I think he's, he's been out there a long time. He does have a plane out there. And I had a moment to talk to him about things also. I am, however, concerned about what's going on at the airport at the moment, and I'm certainly not looking for someone to go there and, and make mass changes or anything like that, but be a part of the solution. So I'm hoping that Mr. Malator would do that and, you know, not cause a lot of havoc, because there is some havoc out there now, as we've seen in the letters, and that's not good for Titusville. It's not good for the community, for sure. So that's really all I have to say about that. I appreciate you wanting to serve, sir.
Thank you. And before I accept the motion, continue that. I would like to say to both gentlemen that we have other positions that will be open in the future. You're certainly welcome to come on and put an application for them. Mr. Kleins in particular, as he spoke last week, and his, he did a very good presentation. I hope he's not, not offended. Again, as stated, Mr. Malator's been in Titusville probably as long as I can remember, and that's a long time. And this other gentleman has been here one year, but his, his job history was impressive, and I'm sure he would make a good member of any board he might choose to. And again, with the other gentleman I put in today, certainly, we hope you come back and look at this board or another board, whatever, whatever you'd like to look at. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in, in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Like sign. Mr. Malator, congratulations. It's unanimous. Next item, sir? Oh, the next item is the, yes, the one we moved up, nine.
Sir, you're at petitions and requests from the public?
I was going to put the other one fir- before that. No, it was after that.
Yeah, we're going to go ahead.
Okay, all right. Is there anybody would like to come forth on petitions and requests? Come up, ma'am? That lady had her hand up first, but you're up there. You can't see her.
I will make it short. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Barrett Bickers. I am a volunteer for Keep Brevard Beautiful, and that brings me right to the point, is that there is a blanket trespass. From what I understand, the city of Titusville has issued that blanket trespass for the piece of property that is between Highway 50 and Knox-McGray, which my company, Ship-Shaped Yacht Service, is adopting as, to keep it clean. And I have here my arrest papers that I spent 18 days in Brevard County Jail, because I got arrested for trespassing there after I did get a warning. I got to be fair, right? But I did get a warning, and as stubborn as I am, I continued to go out there and clean up garbage. I removed two dumpsters full of garbage by myself. And I would like for the City Council to please take in consideration that I have a whole group of volunteers that are willing to help me clean that stretch up. And if you've ever been there, you would know that it is necessary, that the cardholders, okay, badge holders of Keep Brevard Beautiful are exempt to that trespass, so we can get out there and clean it up. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
No questions?
I will have to check with staff as to whether that exemption is, how that comes to be and how it is. But I have no problem with you cleaning up, and I don't think anybody up here does, but it's got to be done properly. And if you receive.
Indeed.
If you receive some notification that you shouldn't do it, I suggest you don't do it.
Well, I was doing it properly. Okay.
No, you were cleaning properly, but what you're doing, you had a, you, you said you were notified that you shouldn't be on that property.
That's why, I got that notice, or should I say the trespass warning, while I was out there cleaning up. And I spoke with some of the Titusville Police Department, also amongst them, the young lady that had to arrest me. She had to do her duty.
Did you refuse to leave, sir?
Well, it's not that I refused to leave. I just returned the next day to keep cleaning.
Okay. I don't think you have to say anything else, sir. You may incriminate yourself.
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Brian Bobbitt of Keeper Bar Beautiful, he's the head there, is well aware of the situation. He knows I'm here today. I asked if he could join us with Ms. Arwin as well, but that was not possible on short notice. So Keeper Bar Beautiful is backing the whole thing. That's whom I'm going to be getting the garbage bags from, who is also going to have the waste management bring the dumpster out so that I can properly dispose of the garbage that I collected, because I got myself into hot water with Cumberland Farms using their dumpster, even though I did ask, but they had no idea just how much garbage I was going to put in there. And I got ridiculed, because there was no room left for their garbage.
The devil is in the details. In this case, the devil is in the garbage.
Aye, sir.
I'm kidding with you, sir, but very seriously, make sure that you're, you're cleared to do that. I don't know anything about that permit or anything else.
Well, as long as.
I'm not asking you a question, sir. I'm just telling you that. Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, everybody. When you come down there, it'll be cleaned up. God bless you all, and God bless my.
Next person, please. I think Laura Lee, you had your hand up, please. Laura Lee Thompson? And you're supposed to give your name for the record, so you might as well do it again.
I'm Laura Lee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue, MEMS, and I do own a business here in Titusville. And that's a hard act to follow.
Yeah, really.
I'm speechless, but that area does need to be cleaned up. In fact, that is an area that has huge potential for, for our community to have something really, really nice for shoreline restoration and a linear park, but that's another subject. But tonight, I'm here to thank you for letting us have the tree workshop last week. I think it went really, really well, and we all really appreciate it. And so I was in the video, so I didn't take extra time and speak. So this is what I would have said last week. Nature and space. We got it all. The most beautiful beach, the biggest and relatively unpolluted part of the Indian River Lagoon, the Space Center, and we got terrific wildlife here, because we have diverse habitats right within our city. And all you have to do to see what happens when you lose diversity is look further to the south. Think about the wildlife you see in those sterile-looking Vieira housing developments. Yes, they do have sandhill cranes, white ibis, cormorants, and grackles, because those birds can adapt to stormwater ponds, lawns, queen palms, and yes, crepe myrtles. But that's about all they've got. You think they have painted bunings and purple finches coming to their bird feeders? Do you think they have gopher tortoises and rabbits, or bobcats and foxes, or turkey and deer in their yards? We do. And so I ask you, as we move forward, to please consider alternative ways to develop so that we can still get the density and everybody wins, but we can still preserve the very best pieces of habitat that we have left in Titusville, because trees are just part of the habitat. And it's that diversity of habitat that makes Titusville special. No other Space Coast community has the variety of ecosystems that we have here in Titusville. We have a special quality of life here in Titusville, and we want to keep it. And then I want to remind you that the city's comprehensive plan, this comes right from the comprehensive plan introduction. It provides long-term vision and direction to guide development and services. And it's aimed at creating desirable places that enhance neighborhoods, encourage new development, and provide services that make our city a desirable place for residents and visitors. It's the intent of the comprehensive plan to preserve and enhance the public health, safety, and welfare through the management of growth, provision of adequate public services, and protection of natural resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Very well done. I see, yeah, Ms. Thompson, if somebody might have a question for you?
I don't really have a question for you, but I do have a suggestion. Bill Kleins sent me a video. It's put on, put together by a developer and an extension agent from the University of Florida. It's probably 10 minutes long, and I, it talks about development and the development, potential development of the future. And I would really like to see Ms. Busaka show it to all of us.
This evening, or?
Not, not this evening. Not this evening.
Don't get excited.
Don't get excited.
Does any member of Council, Council have a problem with that? I think we can do that by consensus, then.
Okay.
Ms. Busaka, you, you heard?
Thank you. Yeah, I think it'd be very interesting. And the developer talks about the way he developed this piece of property, and the cost was comparable to the cost of developing the way we seem to be doing it. So it'd be very interesting.
Okay.
Thanks, Laura Lee.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Name and address for the record, sir? Name and address for the record.
I'm, I'm here as a professional engineer and a citizen here, and thank you for your good intentions to serve and help our community. However, oh, you don't like, that's what my, my children don't like when I say but. But, but, as you know, I'm here because of a, I'm preparing an affidavit as regarding city manager and council members nonsense and negligence regarding a number of issues that I've sent you an email on today, July 23. So I'm asking for you to please contact me regarding for clarification. This affidavit that I will be recording is for the protection of the health, safety, and welfare of the public. I want you to understand, as an engineer, I represent Mother Nature. My concern is that city manager and council members oppose Mother Nature with your negligence and nonsense, contradicting laws and rules of Mother Nature. And that's who I represent. For example, one of the laws, rules that I've repeatedly said is that water flows downhill. Maybe you remember the advertisement that they had with butter versus margarine. It's not nice to fool Mother Nature. Doesn't work. So the root cause that I'm here is that you're ignoring laws of Mother Nature. I'm not saying 70%. I'm saying 100% of why I'm here is because you're ignoring or denying laws of Mother Nature. So with this in mind, well, I'm going to read to you some of these facts of gross negligence, nonsense, deception. And one of them is option to rules and laws of Mother Nature. And another one is acts, statements of malice and fraud at the council meeting on February 12 and later by city manager and mayor, and the enabling and supporting of this malice and fraud by unanimous vote of confidence and abundant praise to city manager by council at a later meeting. Some basic questions that city manager and council are unable to respond to. I read some at the last meeting. The question is, one of them is, why did city engineers design dams without plans to show what the dams flood? Another one is number 11 I have here is, why does city fail to officially send stormwater management plan, title master plan for stormwater drainage to Brevard County as required by the title, greater Titusville area? Number 13, why is city not sought to obtain easements for the maintenance of drainage relief as required by city's stormwater management plan and firm maps, and is expected as soon by the drainage design of I-95? That's a lot of engineers that you're opposing. Lots of them. Am I out of time?
You are out of time, sir.
Sorry. May I have extra time, please?
I see no one.
Nobody wants? Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
Council and Mayor Kathleen Burson, Titusville, Florida. And Stan and Laura Lee are always a hard act to follow. So, but I'm kind of here for the same reason as Laura Lee, and I want to thank Laura Lee and our tree team for putting on the, our presentation and, you know, organizing like we did. It was really a good experience, and thank you guys so much for listening and, and really, you know, showing a deep interest in tree preservation. So we are working on several things. We're, we're not relaxing. We've been working on a tree protection ordinance summary, comparing the ordinances throughout Florida and some outside of Florida for their tree protection. And so far, we've got Titusville, Brevard County, San Antonio, Texas, Sarasota, Indian River County, Gainesville, Tampa, Tallahassee. The only thumbs down so far are Titusville and Brevard County. San Antonio, Gainesville, and Tampa, all three have gotten blue stars for reasonable tree protection ordinances. And two, let's see, four of these, San Antonio, Indian River County, Gainesville, and Tampa, all have an upland habitat protection ordinance in addition to the tree protection ordinance. Tree protection ordinance does not protect habitat. It protects, you know, it doesn't protect our birds and wildlife. It protects trees. Hopefully, we can get significant areas. But the upland, as I had mentioned in our presentation, the two ordinances work together. So the gold star so far goes to Tampa. They have had their, both ordinances on the books for many years. Their tree protection ordinance has been on there for 45 years. Their Natural Resources Director has been there for 45 years. She's watched this ordinance grow up. And the upland habitat ordinance has been on the books since 1993. And I asked her, you know, why do you have both? And she said exactly that, to save habitat, to save trees. Tampa's, so they, oh, Tampa, most important thing. Tampa has invited us. By the way, they have six arborists on staff. They have a population of 300,000, six arborists on staff, 43 planners. It's a big department. They do review every plan that comes through the city. The arborists do. They have invited us to do a workshop with them. And I would like to invite, you know, several members of our tree team will go. They would like to show us their projects. They would like to show us their ordinances, how they work, the intricacies. And they, I would like to invite a council member to attend with us, and Ms. Busaka, the planning director. I think that, you know, we can all be part of that team to go over there and be entertained by Tampa. And I will end that with there, but.
Do you need to finish something?
I'd like to ask if that would be, if there's a council member that would be interested in being part of that team.
Is that all you need? I don't have to make a motion on that. It's just a few seconds.
Yeah, a few seconds, please. Yeah, a few seconds, please.
Well, a minute will, will do, right? Have a motion on that then.
Oh, you need a motion on a minute?
So I don't get in trouble here.
Okay. Can we, can we give her another minute, please? That's my motion.
There's a motion, second. Have a motion, second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
You've got it.
Okay, let me just explain, I have a, putting a list together of what makes a reasonable tree protection and upland protection codes. The basics of a reasonable ordinance for trees is a minimum preservation percentage and/or a high replacement cost. Both of those are intended to discourage tree, big tree removals. In Tampa, if you cannot replace the canopy, they go, you have to replace the canopy of heritage trees by 100%. So that's the first discouragement to, to take the big heritage trees out. So you, you have to replace that canopy either on the property with smaller, you know, new trees, or within the district on another property, or the replacement cost is, a risk assessment is done on the tree to determine how much money can put, be put into the preservation fund. San Antonio, San Antonio and Tampa both protect 100% of the heritage trees.
Should I have some more time?
Okay, I'm, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, but can I ask that question?
You certainly may, although I would suggest, we all have schedules that we have to look at.
Well, what I told Tampa is that we want to work with your schedule for the, the council member who would like to be part of this. Work with your schedule first and Ms. Busaka's first. Coordinate those two. Give us some windows that you're available, and then we'll work with them. And whoever can fit in from our team will go, and whoever can't will.
Okay. Does anybody want to make a commitment at this point?
I've got your number, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, you do. That's right. Member Jordan, I'm sorry.
All right, I, I don't want to make you feel bad, but I heard something that bothered me or concerned me, and that was requirements creep.
What?
Requirements creep.
Creep?
Yeah. You understand that?
No.
Okay. What I'm saying, our first requirement was for the trees, and now I'm hearing the habitat. So I thought we were focused on tree preservation, but now I'm hearing that you want to commingle that with habitat.
Well, we presented that in our, that was my presentation, was on the uplands habitat ordinance as going hand-in-hand with the tree protection.
I just don't want us to, to not be able to do what, what we want to do.
You can vote on it, you can vote on it later, but I think that you should at least entertain both.
Well, I'm not sure. Well, my first question would be to Ms. Busaka, is what she's focused on. Did you, did you hear both, the habitat and the trees, or? Just want to make sure that at the end, we get exactly what we're looking for and not be disappointed at all.
What we've done is we've taken all of the comments that council provided to us at the end of the meeting and put it into a matrix. We have options that, so we can address those. We will then come back to you with a draft ordinance for you to look at, see if we're hitting the points that you want us to hit, and then we would go into the public process. So, I don't have that list in front of me right now, but we took your comments to us as our direction.
Right, right. But I don't remember any council member talking about habitat.
But you remember my presentation.
The majority of the council direction related to protection of trees.
Trees, right.
Yes, sir. That's, that's what I, from my memory, but.
Okay. And, and that's what I'm saying. I want to make sure we're communicating between the, the public and what we had said to you. So I don't want, at the end, you know, you're happy with us right now, but at the end, you say, "Well, you didn't include the..."
Yeah, well, I won't be happy if you don't.
Well, you, you will be happy.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Nelson.
That's it.
I will say that video doesn't specifically say upland habitat, wetland, but it does talk about preserving a lot of the area. And one, providing canopy for the houses so that the cooling costs are lower. The interesting thing is that it did include some of Woody's comments. This particular neighborhood has no curbs, and it has wells to hold the flood, or the runoff.
No stormwater ponds.
So it, it was very interesting. I would like to see, see us look at the different upland habitat, which is something that this, this video doesn't talk about, but it's there.
Well, thank you.
So I don't, I don't think it would hurt to look at it. But I agree, the trees were the primary point last week.
Okay.
So, I, and I don't have any problem if you can talk Ms. Busaka into taking the day out of her busy schedule to go over to Tampa. You don't need sleep, right? So if you can talk her into it, I'll go with, how about that?
Okay. If you'd like to be the one to go, we'd love to have you come.
Okay.
You, you appear to have a commitment, but the other part is up to the city manager.
That's true. That's true.
So.
What, what was that?
The other part's up to.
Ms. Busaka doesn't work for the council. The city manager does. She works for him. So.
I remember that. You remember that?
Then you knew it already. So that will, yet to be determined whether she is available.
Okay. But I do understand that Ms. Nelson is asking that, that comp, that we look at both ordinances at this point, and then council can decide later if, what they want to do, both or not.
That would be, that would be my request, and if, if we think it's too broad, then it doesn't get voted on.
Yeah.
What is specifically are you asking?
That we look at preserving more of the upland as we are preserving the trees. And to be honest with you, my thought is, if we're preserving trees, we are going to be preserving more of the upland. So, but I have no problem with Ms. Busaka of the team looking at that specifically.
Counsel, does everybody concur with that? Oh, you have your light on, sir. So you go, you go first.
Thanks. I, I just wanted to get clarification so there won't be any disappointment because we focus on the trees. And I'm hearing Ms. Burson talk about habitat. I don't have a problem with us doing it, I just want us all to be on the same page as we go forward. That's the only thing I'm saying.
Well, you didn't have to be on the same page at the, can I speak?
Ms. Burson, I have lights up here, and then they take precedence. You've already spoken. Vice Mayor.
I, I would agree that, with both of you actually, that we have a focus on trees. We had a workshop on trees, and believe me, I think that we all came away feeling like we want to work with, you know, get some, some tree regulations and get it done right. As I said, you can't cut down 150-year-old tree and replace it with a crepe myrtle. I mean, we get that. But I get a little concerned if we lose our focus, too. And if we have that focus on trees, we've got to be benefiting the habitat. I, I, I too don't want to, you see, I think you said that at the meeting, you know, maybe we can save some gopher turtles this time. I get that, and I think we're all for that. But I don't want to dilute things so much that we, we lose our focus. Outside of that, I'm all for saving everything we can save, from wildlife to habitat to, to trees. But I think that, you know, again, I think it was called a tree workshop, and I think we want to stay focused on that, and any benefit we can get from that or expansion from that, that would be great. However, your look doesn't tell me that, hey, I appreciate what you're doing here. It sounds like you're looking at me like, yeah, right. So I'll just leave it at that. I, I am focused on trees. We are focused on trees. And the habitat goes with that. I agree. You've got to have things living in the trees. Right?
Well, I heard what Ms. Nelson said clearly, that she would like staff to look at both. And you didn't require a vote at the workshop. Each of you gave your comments, what you would like to see, and she's, I believe she's adding to that comment.
Kathleen, you're on that side at this point, not on this side. Please, please don't direct people up here.
Oh, I'm sorry. It sounded that way. That's, you're right.
Ms. Stokoe.
So I apologize in advance because this is not my area of expertise, but I, I do kind of agree with Ms. Nelson, that I feel like prior to the workshop even being voted on to have the workshop, the concern was, hey, there's this big development, and they just clear-cutted all these trees, and what's, what is our tree preservation? What does that look like? And I think that's kind of what spearheaded the workshop. And I, I think we got focused on the trees and why are we doing this? And then, yeah, replacing, like Member Diesel said, is this a comparable compromise or putting it in the fund? So I think we got focused on that, and I, at least from my perspective, I kind of commingled that with, okay, yeah, if you're getting rid of trees, obviously, some of the wildlife and nature is going to kind of, there's going to be some consequences there for that aspect as well. So I'm open to it, like Member Nelson said. I, I do want to, again, this is not my area of expertise, so I want to give staff the flexibility to kind of go in and see, you know, what, what does that look like? Are there areas, obviously, we can't compare ourselves to Tampa or San Antonio, but there may be some best practices that we can learn from them potentially. So I'm definitely open to it. If we can improve, I think we're all on the same page here with, if we can preserve wildlife, trees, we want to. Also, we want development. We want people coming here. So I'm definitely open to that.
Thank you, counsel.
Anyone else like to comment again? Okay. I, I'm not sure I hear a unanimous decision here. And unless somebody wants to make a motion, then we can do it that way, or we can ask Ms. Busaka to come back up and give her point of view on this because she's the one that has to do it, and she is the most expert one we have.
Because we did not get formal input from the council, we got individual, what we're going to present will cover the comments, and we can indeed include habitat. The bigger this gets, the longer it's going to take, and the more difficult the discussions will be. So that's why we're going to bring back to you a draft that you can, in the Chinese menu kind of proposal, choose those things that you feel like you want to talk about. But the longer, this will take longer, the larger it gets. Just because the staff has more work to do, and there will be more discussion, and it will expand to fill the space. So we will do our best to address the comments that we heard here, but it will be, you will be, hopefully, we'll be able to structure it in a way in which if there's something we present to you that you're not interested in moving on, we take it out of the ordinance, and then we can move forward from there.
I, I know you're going to do a great job. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, you're next, sir.
Yeah, and Ms. Busaka, this isn't a question, so you can, you can keep going for real. But it, but it does bring to the point that, you know, I, if we improve the tree issue, if we don't, if we work on the clear-cutting, then clearly that's going to benefit any habitat that's living there. And that's where I was going with that, you know? When we're working with the trees, that's kind of the ground floor of everything else. So obviously, I think the council's all for all of it. But I am concerned that, you know, as you noted, the more we add, the more we expand, the longer it takes. I'd like to get one thing done at a time, but at the same time, if we can, again, clear-cutting kind of hurts all of us, I think, when we look at that. It concerns us, it scares us. Nobody likes looking at it and say, wow, that was great. But we understand that that happens, and, and we just need to deal with how we can make it best work for our trees, which will benefit our habitat. And that's, I think, what you were saying.
Member Jordan?
Back up again. I, I think Ms. Busaka said it really well, you know? We've, we've got to really be careful. I want us to be successful with this, but if we keep adding, we're going to have a problem for sure. We may end up with nothing. And I know no one wants that, Ms. Burson. So we just need to be focused on what we do. If, if you can bring some stuff together without it being too difficult, then I'm for that. But I really would like for us to get something, she, she talked about a blue star. We weren't a blue star. That kind of bothered me, you say that. Actually, I like a gold star instead of a blue star anyhow. But the, the bottom line to me is I think we need to get a, a tree ordinance that we all can live with, and, and it's something that we can work with, for sure. Thank you, sir.
I don't hear consensus here. Does somebody want to make a, a motion, and we'll clear it up real fast?
Okay. I'll make the motion that, as part of the information brought back by staff, that we asked them to bring back information on upland preservation also.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have an emotion and a second. All those in favor, say yes.
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 Thank you very much. All right. Anybody else from petitions and requests? Quick, let's go on.
Yes, sir. We're on to consent agenda items. Counsel, is there any council member that would like to pull an item off of the consent? Mayor, I'd like to pull 8E after I read for the record and discuss that i, particular item with council. And I believe we have a card on 8G.
Aren't we doing the?
19.
You're right. I got you.
All right. You're right. Let's get 9G going.
I'm, I'm following, I'm saying, where did that?
Okay, so we're on item 9G, Development Agreement 2-2019 Titus Landing. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this request at their 17 July 2019 meeting and recommended approval 5.0. The applicant, Exel Project Management, on behalf of the owner, Titusville Harrison One LLC, has submitted an application to approve the Fourth Amendment to the Development Agreement for Titus Landing for the property located at 2500 South Washington Avenue. The property subject of this request is approximately 30.86 acres in size and currently has the approved development agreement and final master plan. The amendment proposes, this request will extend the agreement initial five years until February 18, 2024. Staff recommends approval of this request. We have Ms. Busaka on hand to answer any questions, and the developer is also on hand.
Counsel, any questions? Would somebody like to make a motion?
Move to approve the development agreement.
Oh, wait, wait one second. I do have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is a public hearing, so you have to open it, sir, real quick.
I'm sorry?
Public hearing.
Oh, okay. We've got to go through all that, huh? Okay. I'll, I'll, let's see which item we got here. It's not, it's not, it's not going to, all right, you introduce the item. City staff, you have any? Counsel, any questions of staff? I'll open the public he, hearing. Are there, any speakers on this item? Any cards?
Yes, sir. One person, Cliff Aiken from Exel.
Mr. Aiken, would you like to come up?
Only if you have a question.
Sir?
Only if you have a question.
Does anyone have a question of Mr. Aiken? I guess not. You just walked up. Thanks for coming up, sir.
Sure. No problem.
All right. The, anyone else? Any other speakers on this item? See any, council discussion? See any? I'll close the public hearing, accept a motion? Yes, please.
I recommend that we approve Development Agreement number 2-2019, Fourth Amendment to Development Agreement for Titus Landing to extend the agreement for additional five years.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Now, back to consent. Since I went on a roll on that one.
Go right ahead.
Like I was saying before, staff would like to pull item 8E, and then we have a card on 8G. So with permission, I read for the record.
Okay.
Consent Agenda Item 8A. Authorized Amendment to the 2018-2019 Community Development Block Grant Agreement with North Brevard Charities Sharing Center to utilize grant funds for citywide public services rather than simply youth services. Consent Agenda Item 8B. Prove the attached budget amendment providing the necessary funds for action and the award of road repair near 2880 Hopkins Avenue to Massey General Contracting Corporation of Port Orange, Florida in the amount of $54,017.98, and authorize the city manager to put Manager to Put in Place Instruments Necessary for the Award. Consent Agenda Item 8C, Approve the Award of Bids Number 19B035 in the Amount of $112,000 to DBS Manufacturing of Atlanta, Georgia to finish and deliver a new drive unit for the 8 Million Gallon Clarifier at the Morning Dove Water Treatment Facility and Authorize City Manager to put the instruments in place for this purchase. Consent Agenda Item 8D, Approve Police Department K-9 Donation Fund Request Transfer of $30,000 to Project Training Account to Cover the K-9 Handling Training. Consent Agenda Item 8E, Set the Tentative Operating Millage Rate for the FY 2020 Budget at 8.2443 mils, which is 10% above the rolled back millage rate of 7.495 mils. Set the voted debt service millage rate Riverfront Acquisition Referendum to .3463 mils. The maximum levy authorized by the Series 2005 General Obligation Bonds is .535930 mils. Consent Agenda Item 8F, Approve the Staff Recommended Revisions to Titusville Student Advisory Council Scholarship Policy. Consent Agenda Item 8G, Resolution 302019, Approving the Honorary Street Name and Placing the Historical Markers on South Street in Honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Consent Agenda Item 8H, Approve the Nomination of Gibson Rivers House Located at 723 Palm Avenue to the City's Register of Historic Places by Adopting Resolution 312019. Consent Agenda Item 9, 8A, 8I, Adopt Resolution 322019 as requested by the Titusville Environmental Commission. Consent Agenda Item 8J, Adopt Resolution 332019 as requested by the Titusville Environmental Commission. Consent Agenda Item 8K, Adopt Resolution 342019 as requested by the Titusville Environmental Commission. And Consent Agenda Item 8L, Approve and Execute 2019-2020 School Board of Brevard County SRO Program Agreement as required in a budget amendment. So Mayor, I'd like to go back to item E at this point.
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
The proposed budget is balanced at a tax rate of 7.720 mils, which is 3.01% above the rollback rate of 2.7951 and is 2.90% above the current millage rate of 7.9517. Staff requests council set the tentative millage rate at 8.2443 mils, which is 10% above the rollback rate of 7.495 mils. That will give you flexibility during the budget process to go above what our proposed millage rate is, up to 10%, which is as high as you can go by law.
I will comment that this is generally what we do. We set it at the highest and then go back down after we find out what we need to get done that particular year. So do we take this separately now or?
No, sir.
Put it back in the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Anybody have any question?
I would prefer on this item that you do vote on this particular one separately, so we'll have it in the minutes.
Okay.
Separate, if you would, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Also, I'd like to take this time, I had a citizen ask me about, I think, some of the resolutions. I also want everyone to understand, if you wanted to speak on these consent items, you need a card in if you want to be heard, otherwise they're going to vote. So if you wanted to speak, you need to let them know.
Yeah, we have a card in for 8G.
Okay.
Member?
Yep.
Can we vote on this item that we just talked about now? Okay. Member Jordan?
Okay, so we're going to vote on all the items except 8G?
No, we're voting on just, just E.
Microphone, microphone.
Okay, I move that we set the tentative operating millage rate for the fiscal year 2020 budget at 8.2443 mils.
The tentative?
Tentative.
All right.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously.
You also have as part of that the voted debt service millage rate at .3463 mils.
Was that part of your memo?
Yes.
Is everybody clear with that?
Yes.
Okay. And the next item to discuss, you said we have a card on?
Yes, sir, that's 8G. Ma'am?
Sir, would you like to come up? Go, ma'am? I'm sorry. I thought they generally was talking about.
My name is Lynn Golden and good evening to all the council. Thank you very much for the consensus of Martin Luther King Street. First of all, I thank God because this has gone on since 1985, trying to get it approved. And I would like to commend my, the first set of group that started this, the Concerned Citizen, Ms. Bell, Ms. Jones, Pastor Deborah Davis, Juanita Houston, and a few more groups that has passed on. And now I'd like all those that jumped on the board with me, would you please stand? Kirk Davis is my vice president, Ben Warren, Clara Davis, Pastor Davis, will you please stand so people can see you? Ms. Jones and Ms. Bell, I would like to say happy birthday. It took over 20 years, you're 91, to get this, you started this program. And God has allowed you to see this go through. Thank you very much. And to my, Mr. Sigler just came in, and most of all, I'd like to thank Pastor Davis for your congregation. I need help in the community. I need your men to help me. So don't let this be your last time to be, come when we have a meeting, please, we have another five-year program that is going to be awesome in the Black community. Terry and Peggy, thank you for all the things that you have put up with us in the meeting, but we came together as unity, even though we had some different ideas and that's what makes us come back together, that we can sit down at the table and eat the same thing and don't have an upset stomach. Thank you for everything. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And I think all of you deserve a round of applause.
He was the original with the group, too.
Okay.
And Mayor, we have a late card for items 8I, J, and K by one person.
Okay. Who would that person be?
Lynn Golden. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sir, I thought you asked me if it was the lady who just spoke.
Oh.
I apologize. The speaker is Brian Bobbit.
Come up, sir, please. Do one item at a time.
Let me get you. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilmen and women. My name is Brian Bobbit. I'm Vice Chair of the Titusville Environmental Commission. We have three items before you today. The first item I'd like to address is the recognizing businesses which voluntarily reduce single-use plastics. As we all know, the Plastic Straw Campaign has hit nationwide and it's become very feverish throughout the entire country. Keeper of Our Beautiful has started a program a couple of years ago in partnership with Brevard Zoo called Litter Quitter. And this program is to encourage all restaurants to reduce their single-use plastics by using more biodegradable products, creating an ask-first straw policy instead of just coming to your table and dropping a bunch of straws on there and everything else like that. These simple practices are cost-efficient for the restaurants, not only because they're not using so many straws, but by being a member of the Litter Quitter program, they're getting reduced prices on compostable to-go containers and everything else like that. So Titusville Environmental Commission has heard the presentation and we'd like to urge for you to approve that. And on top of approving it, support it, advertise it. I know all of you are out in the community quite a bit. If you don't have, if you know of a restaurant that's not involved in the program, strongly urge them, encourage them to take a look at it and there's no cost to be part of that program. So that's the first agenda item. Any questions on that one?
Any questions? Yes, go right ahead.
Brian, are you guys going to put this on the website and advertise to people who are part of the program?
Absolutely. Keeper of Our Beautiful does put Litter Quitter members on their website as well as a monthly editorial in the Hometown News. We would love for the city of Titusville to put advertisement or information about the program on the city of Titusville's website so that way our local restaurants have access to them.
Mr. Larisse, is there any reason we couldn't put it on our?
No.
Website and advertise, actually, all three?
Yeah.
That these are the things we're doing, these are the reasons that we're doing it and we're asking you to give up plastic because, or we're asking you to give up whatever it is because.
Styrofoam, instead of using plastic bags. I know there's a lot of controversy on the plastic bag issue, but instead of banning the plastic bags, why don't we just encourage the restaurants to use paper bags? That way, you're not getting into the legal issues.
I think what we'll do also is the next edition of Talking Points, we'll put these three in there to describe what they are.
That would be great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any members of council have any problems with that? All right, we got two on.
Okay, so one down, two to go.
One, two.
Next one is item J, Resolution Supporting the Lagoon Friendly Lawn Program. Again, Keeper of Our Beautiful program. The Titusville Environmental Commission has heard several presentations on our stormwater runoff and the nitrogen levels, the phosphate levels. Dr. Lisa Soto from MRC came and did a presentation to the commission and our numbers are higher than anyone else in the county. And that's something that we want to try and improve on, especially on behalf of the Titusville Environmental Commission. Keeper of Our Beautiful has a program called Lagoon Friendly Lawn, which encourages homeowners to use more native plant landscaping, reduce fertilizer if they don't completely eliminate it. Just because we live in Florida, we don't have to have that St. Augustine grass. We have plenty of green, beautiful native plants that don't need all that fertilizer. So we encourage homeowners to adapt those policies. We help guide you in, you know, figuring out what's best for your lawn. We work very closely with UFIFIS. We work with Master Gardeners. We try to get homeowners informed on proper ways that they can reduce their nitrogen runoff throughout all their lawns. So it's a very big program. The city of South Lake Beach has adopted it and jumped with both feet, encouraging all new businesses that come into their city to landscape and lagoon-friendly lawn practices. So if we could get the city of Titusville to buy in to that level, that'd be excellent. Again, no cost to the city or any homeowner to be part of this program. It's education for the community and helps spread that word and encourage it, maybe even adopt policies to encourage new businesses to landscape appropriately to protect our lagoon would be great.
Any questions? Any objections to anything that's asked for?
I am on fire tonight. Okay, here we go. Last one. All right. The last one is item K, which is supporting the countywide composting program. Composting's a big deal and we're trying to get that to grow within the community of Brevard County. We received a presentation from, well, several different conversations took place at the Environmental Commission where at first we tried to get the city of Titusville to create their own composting program. I know we have our own solid waste program. To add some type of subscription-based composting service to that was at first what we were discussing and then we decided that's a big stretch. Let's start off small, let's try to encourage backyard composting, something that would be beneficial to local homeowners at first and then see where that grows. The demand for composting countywide is growing. I've had several conversations with Yuri Rodriguez from Solid Waste. I represent the Titusville Environmental Commission and KBB at the Brevard Sustainable Working Group and all the other sustainability committees countywide are buying into this as well. What we would like to do is adopt the city of Orlando's backyard composting program. The first two are free, this is where I get you. The city provides composting bins to any resident that would be interested in doing composting in their backyard. There's plenty of education material that Keeper of Our Beautiful and the Titusville Environmental Commission can provide to anyone interested in doing so. The city maintains ownership of those bins, so if someone moves, the city gets those bins back. If they break, there's a lot of compost bins that have warranties on them that last for many years. But the fact is, one person composting in a house reduces the amount of waste that goes into landfill by over a pound and a half per day. That's a lot of people in the city of Titusville that could be reverting some of that waste in the stuff that's going to go into their gardens, make their flowers grow better, reduce the use of fertilizers, all around a win for our environment and for our community. Later on down the road, I would really like to see a commercial composting facility within our city that would, you know, reduce costs on the public service department. They can use that for landscaping here within the city as well, so, and possibly, you know, sell it to the community members that don't have lawns that they can compost on their own.
Member Nelson?
Brian, how much are the bins?
It varies on the type of bin. I mean, it's just like cars, you can go for that Mercedes or you can go for the Pinto I drove here. So, yeah. The average cost for a turning bin can be around $40 per bin. Keeper of Our Beautiful is currently going after a grant from Solid, or, excuse me, from Waste Management for $2,500 to be able to provide bins to lagoon-friendly lawn homeowners. So that's people that have already started to make the steps and make the processes to, you know, reduce their runoff and everything else like that and improve their gardens. Those are going to be the first people from Keeper of Our Beautiful's side. The bin costs, it really varies. I mean, you can go out for a grant.
You need additional time, sir?
Yes, sir.
How much?
Um.
You're wasting time.
Two, three minutes? Two or three minutes, sir?
Can you do it in two minutes?
I can do two.
Okay. And make that motion.
A motion and a second. All of them in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're talking Pinto. How much is the Pinto?
Pinto, about 30 or 40 bucks per bin.
Okay. And the Mercedes, I'm assuming it's probably?
Ah, they could be up to about 100, 150. I know Caitlin has done research on what's the most expensive Cadillac you've seen.
Yeah, about 150.
150 for the most and that's got the bells and whistles and everything else like that on it. But bare basics, for someone's backyard, you can get by with a $40 bin. You can sell them at Lowe's, they sell them at Home Depot, or you can buy them in bulk through other agencies. I know Keeper Orlando Beautiful gets a massive purchase every year and that's the ones that they use.
So Brian, this particular resolution, that does not include buying them right now?
Correct. I mean, this is something that we just, we've discussed, we've looked at all the avenues and we figure that this is probably the best approach is to leave it to you and decide whatever you think would be best for the program.
So I really didn't hear your last question, I'm sorry, but you said not right now. What, not right now?
So they have a resolution in front of us and our question is, at this point, are we saying, the city of Titusville is buying composting bins or not?
No, not right now. Right now, it's just to endorse the idea that in the future, maybe during budget season next year, it's considered, but regardless, to support the countywide effort, that's going to be growing.
So it's something we would consider during the budget, but not now?
During next year's budget.
Correct.
Okay. Member Stokel?
Member Nelson actually was getting to my point. If I'm reading this correctly, Brian, it looks to me like this is just something that if we were to vote on it as a council, that we approve this, that this is something that we are interested in. There's no financial commitment to it right now, but we see that this could potentially be a benefit and to potentially work with other cities throughout Brevard County to maybe implement a program. Or should we get grant funds, potentially, we can maybe pilot a program?
Exactly. We'll possibly work with other municipalities in the future to get bulk rate discount on bins.
Perfect. No, that's great. Thanks for doing all this work.
It's the Titusville Environmental Commission and several people that are involved with it, so.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
Are you doing the consent or the whole consent?
No, no. Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. This is under consent. We'll put that into the consent, although the understanding is we're not buying them now.
Correct.
We're just saying, this is a good idea, we'll proceed in the future at some point.
Support the idea of composting countywide and then in the future, consider working towards those means.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
And that was the last item, so we will do the?
Yes, sir. Just to clarify, you'll need a motion for consent agenda items 8A through D.
All except the E.
And then for F through L. And there are resolutions, so you'll need.
Yes, sir. All right. Everybody heard that? I have a motion. I see, Member Jordan, your light on.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to.
Hey, now, kids, play nice.
Yeah, play nice, for sure. To approve consent agenda 8A, B, C, D, F, G, H, I, J, K, and L.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote please, clerk.
Member, excuse me, Member Jordan?
Member, excuse me, member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item, sir?
Yes, sir, I'd like to explain the six public hearings that council was about to hear. These public hearings, council should hear any objections to the proposed action by the city and by the public and/or the property owner. Following such testimony, the council may, one, confirm, amend, modify, rescind the resolution of necessity; two, determine whether the improvements will be made; three, and how much cost, and how much cost shall be paid. Council must then authorize staff to proceed with the improvements by adopting the resolution to proceed. And what I'd like to do, mayor and council, is, on each one of the items, I'll introduce what the address is. You can open the public hearing, we have staff to show you some pictures of those properties, and then we can just vote on that. So, is there any questions on what actions we need to do?
I'm sure we'll get it after the first one.
Okay. Okay, so the first structure is located at 711 Booker Street, units A and B, and this is order, or, agenda item number 9A. And Glenn, go ahead and fire away.
Thank you. The property located at 711 Booker Streets, units A and B, has been abandoned vacant and disrepaired since 2010 and continues drawing code enforcement liens. The structure has suffered severe damage on the exterior walls and roof and currently has an assessed lien of $104,000, or $104,320.17. And, I'm not sure if you've attached the pictures or not.
What are we looking for?
Yeah. You got a picture? Okay.
Best-linied plans of mice and men.
Yeah, it is in your agenda packet.
Yeah, we've seen, yeah, we've seen them.
So, mayor, you can open the public hearing.
Okay, I will open the public hearing. Are there any cards?
Uh, no, sir.
I will close the public hearing, and now we will vote on this item, or we go to the next one?
A vote on this item.
Okay, and this is just a regular vote, right? It doesn't have to be roll call?
It's a resolution.
Oh, it is a resolution, yeah, so this has to be, well, I have to have a motion, I guess.
Move to approve resolution number 35-2019 to proceed with the removal of a condemned and hazardous structure located at 711 Booker Street, unit A and B.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? I see a light up there, but that was you. Okay. Any further discussion? Not hearing any? All those, uh, roll call vote, please.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item, sir?
Item 9B is resolution 36-2019 to proceed with the removal of a condemned and hazardous structure located at 511 Cannaveral Avenue.
You're on.
This property has been abandoned vacant, disrepaired since October 2007, and continues to be a code violation. The structure, the porch has already collapsed on this one and is unsafe, and currently has $340,702.21 in assessed liens.
Very expensive piece of property. Okay, any questions? Any discussion? I'll accept, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody have any cards in?
Uh, no, sir.
I'll close the public hearing. What's your desire?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Move that we approve resolution 36-2019 to proceed with the removal of a condemned and hazardous structure located at 511 Cannaveral Avenue.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Next item, please.
Item 9C is resolution number 37-2019 to proceed with the removal of a condemned and hazardous structure located at 1229 First Avenue.
And this, this, this piece of property has been abandoned vacant and disrepaired since May of 2008. It suffered severe fire damage and was condemned in 2011. Its current lien assessment's $1,077,732.67.
Any questions from council? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Any cards on this item?
Yes.
I'll close the public hearing. What's your, uh, roll call vote, please?
Move to approve resolution number 37-2019 to proceed with the removal of a structure at 1229 First Avenue.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Next item?
Item 9D is resolution 38-2019 to proceed with the removal of a condemned and hazardous structure located at 508 Lucky Street.
This property fell in disrepair and vacant in 2008, and was a continuing code violation, has actually suffered two extensive fires, and is in the danger of collapsing, and its current lien assessment's $90,988.31.
Any questions from staff? I don't see any. I'll open the public hearing. Any cards, clerk?
Uh, no, sir.
I'll close the public hearing. I have a motion.
Move to approve resolution 38-2019 to proceed with the removal of condemned and hazardous structure located at 508 Lucky Street.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item, please.
9E is resolution 39-2019 to proceed with the removal of a condemned and hazardous structure located at 144 Roosevelt Street.
This structure has also been abandoned vacant since Hurricane Matthew, where it suffered most of its damage. It caused the roof to be collapsed in two different areas. It still remains full of furniture, has mold. We've been out several times resecreing this particular property, and it has a lien amount of $80,539.82 as of today.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Is there any cards on this item?
No, sir.
I'll close the public hearing. Accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution number 39-2019 to proceed with the removal of a condemned and hazardous structure located at 144 Roosevelt Street.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any? Roll call vote, please.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Next item?
Item 9F is resolution 40-2019 to proceed with the removal of a condemned and hazardous structure located at 192 Roosevelt Street.
Yes, this structure has been abandoned vacant since 2011. It too also has suffered severe roof collapse and unsecure, and we're currently at $78,334.42 in this structure.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, yes, sir.
This is our last one.
Yes.
Why does it take so long for us to get to this point? You're talking 2001, 11 years.
Yes, yes, sir.
Why is that?
There was a "why" in it.
Yeah, why is that?
Uh, actually, I...
I don't have a...
I was here during that period, so maybe I can answer it.
Yeah.
It was, we were going through some pretty tough times, and these have to be torn down, somebody's got to pay for it, and so, a lot of them were put on the shelf for a while, and they built up to where it was time to do it. We're having better times now, so, that's why, basically.
Is there a process in place that says there, and I understand what you're saying, I don't have a problem with it, I'm just trying to understand, does the process dictate that there's a certain amount of time that we're supposed to?
Well, what it's basically regulated by is that they're put under a penalty per day, and in order to foreclose on it, we need that amount to go over whatever possible price of the land is, not up to the millions, but...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, millions, yeah.
But at least, at least that if we had to file a suit on it, that it would be covered by that amount, so, that has a lot to do with that, but is there something else you want to add?
But, yeah, yes, sir, and to answer member Jordan's question, is actually, yes, we have started now a new process where these properties will come much faster to council when they've hit that point.
Okay.
Well, over the last four years, we've put together that process. It only, not only gets it to the code board faster, but we get the whole program going faster, so now, you're probably less to a year before they would come up.
Okay.
So, we improved the process.
We actually had made a list of homes, we started with, I think, 20 when I came on board, and these were down to the last six. There's still one or two out there, but we've actually got a lot of them done by the property owners.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir. And kind of on the flip side, because it is the last one, and I certainly understand where you're coming from, member Jordan, I know that we have had those same comments in the past about what's taking so long, what's taking so long, and if I'm not mistaken, it wasn't too long after we had those questions, you did a presentation on how we've changed the process so it'll be quicker. So, I was hoping to say now, because I believe, believe this is like the first time we've done this since I've been on council going into fourth year, I appreciate that. I think that clearly there was a slowness, and certainly noted, and we were concerned about it previously. What are we doing, what are we doing? And so, here we are, and I'm looking at all the pictures of the houses, and all the work that you have to do, and all the steps you have to take, but I appreciate the movement, and this is the first time, again, in four years, that we've been able to go and make a vote on these things, and some of these, they've got to be dangerous just to walk by, you know, so I appreciate that very much. You speak of one that, probably the best-looking house on the list. It's got mold, and hasn't been touched since Hurricane Matthew, so, you know, that can't be good for people in the area. So, I wanted to say thank you for working on the process to make this quicker, so we don't come into a, you know, 11 or 16-year deficit, and thank you for being here now and, you know, uncovering what we've had to do, because some of these need uncovering, you can't even see them from the street. So, I want to thank you for the progress we've made in the new program that you've got in place.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Yes, go right ahead.
Although Vice Mayor just basically said everything that I wanted to say, probably better, so, I just want to say thank you, again, being, going on my fourth year. We've heard this, we heard this at the community conversation, and it's just nice to see that you, how hard you guys are working, and I think you touched on it, I wanted to say, how many more are on the list? You said a couple more that you guys are looking at?
Yes, ma'am, and then there are some commercial properties that we're looking at now as well.
Gotcha.
To better, as we move forward towards the quarters down, we're trying to get these buildings caught up, and our real push is to get the property owners to do it first.
Right, and I know it does cost money too, so, keep us posted, and we appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Okay.
We need to vote on this one, sir.
I'm sorry. We got you on track, we got to pass the last one. Oh, okay. We have a motion for the last one.
I move to approve resolution number 40-2019 to proceed with the removal of a condemned and hazardous... Condemned and hazardous structure located at 192 Roosevelt Street. Thank you so much.
I have a motion in a second. I'll open the public hearing. Are there any cards, clerk?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Roll call vote, please.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Okay, now we're back down to the next item.
Yeah, we've completed 9G, so, council, we are now on 9H, which is conditional use permit, CUP for 2019 Orange Street Parking Lot. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow a parking lot as a principal use. There are two properties subject to this request. The two properties totaling .45 acres are located at the corner of Granus Avenue in Orange Street and Robbins Avenue in Orange Street, within the urban mixed-use zoning district. If this request is approved, the sole use of the property will be off-street parking lot, which is permitted with conditions in section 28149 of the city's Land Development Regulations. Staff is recommending several conditions that are in your packet prior to approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this request on, and they're July 17, 2019, and recommended approval with conditions that there be no overnight parking. The vote was 5-0. Ms. Busaka is available to fill you in on this one.
Before you do that, city attorney, were you supposed to do any prior reading on that?
As soon as CUP, it's not an ordinance, so there's no...
Okay, you don't have to do that. Okay, I know it's up there. Ms. Busaka, how are you?
I'm well, thank you.
Oh, good.
I just wanted to let you know that the staff report includes a review of the general conditions under which conditional use permits are reviewed, that the staff finds that the proposed use is not inconsistent with the urban mixed-use land use designation. There also are no objections from the fire department, and the staff does not believe that the proposed use is likely to cause nuisance issues related to odor, smoke, electrical interference, and/or mechanical vibrations. There are specific conditions as well that relate simply to this conditional use permit, and the staff has reviewed that and has a couple of comments. The hours of operation that are required with this conditional use permit are that no vehicles are allowed to be moved between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. The reason for that is because we wanted to reduce the amount of activity on these sites. Moving of vehicles could be additional noise, as well as lighting, so, this would simply be used as, during the daytime, and that vehicles would be permitted to be parked there, under the staff recommendation. The planning and zoning recommended that there be no vehicle parking in the lot overnight. The staff does not feel that this is warranted, as just leaving vehicles in the parking area does not seem to be a nuisance. In reviewing the tape of the P&amp;Z meeting, concerns expressed by the P&amp;Z included potential problems that could happen later if a different owner utilizes this property, concerns about renting out the parking lot, and concerns about vans being parked overnight. There has been a concept plan provided. The applicant should be aware that, the fact that this does not meet the requirements of the site plan review process, which will be a subsequent step, and so, we, one of the, several of the conditions relate to the requirements of the site plan, and that is to make sure that the code is being followed. Those include that if a variance or waiver is required to meet the design criteria, that those would have to be approved before the site plan could be approved, that an opaque fence six feet in height shall be constructed along all interior property boundaries to screen the proposed use from the property adjacent to the subject property, all lighting shall be pedestrian scale, and all fixtures shall be mounted no higher than six feet, and that site lighting shall be designed and oriented so that the amount of light at the southern property boundary is zero-foot candles to minimize the impact to the residential uses to the south of the subject property. the impact to the residential uses to the south of the subject property. There is no, the staff does not believe that there is any need for a traffic study based on the proposed size of the parking lot, and the intended use of the parking lot is to support the commercial uses to the north across the street. The applicant has not indicated the use will include long-term vehicle storage. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I see two lights here. Member Jordan, yours is first.
Yeah, if I can get some clarification, you were saying no movement of cars between 10:00 and 7:00 AM, correct?
Yes, sir.
So how does that work if, if you've got a car parked there and the planning committee said no overnight parking? I'm, I'm not sure.
Well, that would be in conflict. Well, that would be in conflict, because the conditional use permit as it was approved by council when this ordinance was amended would have allowed parking there overnight as long as it was not moved after 10:00 AM. I'm sorry, after 10:00 PM or before 7:00 AM.
So without this conditional?
So the conditional, the condition recommended by planning and zoning is more restrictive than that.
Yeah, it sounds like, because you're in this commercial area, right?
Yes, sir, it is.
Yeah.
Is residential, vacant residential to one side, but it is directly across the street from the commercial area that it is intended to serve.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Member Nelson?
I was gonna say, Robert, it is basically residential back there. So I think that's part of the reason for that. Peggy, I do have a question. I was reading the staff analysis, and you're talking about a six-foot opaque fence. What they're requesting is a six-foot high wall in the middle of the staff analysis. If you go to five, section five.
It says the uses of the South staff are recommending a six-foot high wall along the interior side to buffer the residential uses, and then along the 20-foot landscape buffer along Robbins Avenue is sufficient to buffer the properties to the east.
Okay, so we're talking about a wall separating?
Against the residential area. Yes, and then a landscape buffer to the properties to the east.
Okay. And how much parking are we talking about?
The, this has not been.
Approximately.
This has not been designed yet.
Okay.
So I can't tell you because we don't have a concept plan showing adequate buffers, adequate turning radius. So I can't tell you how many sites there can be. The applicant may have more information than that.
Okay, thanks.
Member Stokel?
Thank you. Peggy, can you help me understand the map a little bit? I'm on a 267 and 268, the zoning map, and then an actual, the actual aerial view of it. So I'm seeing it's surrounded by urban mixed-use and the commercial, but I hear residential, so I'm assuming is there residential within the urban mixed-use?
Urban mixed-use is permitted within residential, yes.
Okay, so the, where are the resi, like, are these houses that I'm looking at that are right next to this piece?
Yes, there is residential to the, let me make sure I have this right. There is residential to the south.
Okay.
And the east.
Okay.
To the north is the retail office complex, and to the west is also residential.
Okay. And then is what, so how it's cut out in the orange piece, how it has, what, what is that piece that's cut out? Is that just trees or is that a building underneath there? I'm, I know, I wish I could show you the map. The way that it's cut on what we're trying to turn into a parking lot, I guess, right next to it, it looks like trees, but there looks like there might be a building right there, I guess. And I don't know if that's a house or, yeah, I just don't know what that is. And, and I guess where I'm going with this, I'd have no problem with this if this was more of the commercial retail, like, I'd see no issue, I guess. And then this overnight parking, kind of to what member Jordan was saying, I don't know how we would enforce that necessarily.
I don't know either.
And I don't, and I heard you list off some of the reasons for it, but again, I don't know, I don't, it's confusing to me, I guess, a little bit.
I, I think this was difficult for planning and zoning, similar to what I'm seeing, because we have not, in the past, this is our first time, of thinking about a parking lot as the primary use of a lot. And I think that that is something that, that we're not used to, and so we're struggling with trying to understand how it's going to function.
Were residents notified of this?
Yes, everyone within 500 feet.
Did we hear from anybody?
We did not.
Okay, that makes me feel a lot better. Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
In this case, member Stokel took a lot of what I was going to say and probably said it better, especially the part about the residence. I, I have blown this up, and I'm at, and at 150, and member Stokel's right, there is a building underneath those trees there that you really can't see until you get close enough. I, you know, well, I can't see. But, yeah, I have, yeah, two, yeah, whatever she said. I, I have some concerns for the number of things you don't know yet, you know? And, and that's not on you. The point I'm making is making the decision based on, we don't have the, the, the site plans, we don't have this, we don't have that. And, and that's probably the way it's supposed to go. I'm concerned as well about the residential appearance to me. And I'm also relieved a little bit, like member Stokel said, that there hasn't been any concern expressed. But do they, you know, I, I guess you've told them what could be coming.
Yes, we notify them in writing that there is a conditional use permit for this use on that property. We tell them the dates and times of all of the meetings.
Okay. And then, of course, the other concern I have, I think was expressed down here, I think, member Jordan, the enforcing of the overnight parking kind of thing. And of course, the overnight parking could be a concern in a residential area like that. So I've, I've got all kinds of mixed emotions on this one.
I see no more lights. I'll open the public hearing. Clerk, are there cards on this?
Uh, yes, sir, the applicant, Kim Rosanka.
All right. Please come up, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor Johnson, members of the city council. My name is Kim Rosanka. I am with the law firm of Cantwell &amp; Goldman in Cocoa Village. I'm here representing the applicant, Garden Street Office Retail Complex LLC. I think that's, yes. Because that's what it's called as well, so I apologize.
Please, please continue.
I, yeah, I apologize. So before you, you were handing out a, a picture that looks like this. I printed off Google Maps and gave it to planning and zoning last week. And the reason was to show you, I'm sure you're all familiar with it, but we're talking about the four-unit white building, the commercial center that was built back in 1978. These four units comprise approximately 19,000 square feet, yet there's only 18 parking spaces on this property, most of which are now being used by the medical supply company. When my client bought this property back in early 2018, they bought this land, came with the two vacant parcels to the south that we're talking about for the parking lot. The intent was always to put it as employee parking for this unit. There's no overnight parking intended. It's not going to be rented out. It's just for parking. Now, if an employee's car breaks down, it has to stay there overnight, but it's not intended to be for overnight parking. And your conditional use conditions say you can't move it even if it is. This is right next to a similar unit. We can see the little orange corner. It's another four-unit complex built in 1969. It has limited parking. It has the donut shop in there, I believe. You may recall, I was here back in February of this year regarding this ordinance that you changed to allow off-street parking as a primary use and urban mixed-use. And that's why I'm back here today for this conditional use. Your conditional use process says if we meet these conditions, and my client has agreed to these conditions and standards, then we should get the conditional use permit. You can add additional conditions. My client is not in favor of no overnight parking, the condition that was requested by planning and zoning. Not that it's intended to be used for overnight parking, but again, how do you enforce it? How can he enforce it? He's not going to have a gated parking lot, although there will be fences up as, as required by the code, by conditions. The section 28-149, which is in your packet, is the ordinance at page 272. The applicant agrees to all of the conditions required by this conditional use, agrees to the additional conditions by staff, the one through four on the first page. He will make sure his tenants also comply with these conditions. The applicant is going to seek variances to the setback in landscaping. This is a small lot, it's about .45 acres. You have a concept plan that shows 32 parking spaces. If, if he can't get the variances, then he's only going to have 22 parking spaces, which is still doubling it, but he needs 33, 32, 33 spaces for his other tenants. Your staff has recommended approval on page 259 of the conditional use permit with the standard conditions required by your code, the additional four conditions, which is acceptable to the applicant. And with that, I would request you approve CUP 4-2019 with the conditions one through four on page one of your staff report.
Member Nelson?
Kim, would your client be willing to put a wall along that south, south edge? Let me look at the picture. I, I don't know. I don't have any authorization to do that. The conditions were the south edge. If you go back to the map on 268? Well, there's, there's two south edge. There's a south edge going off of Granus Street into the project. Then, then there's a south edge, a budding a vacant, what looks to me like a vacant residential lot. Because my thought is, most of those people in there seem to be tenants running. They probably don't care one way or the other. But at some point, hopefully, this area will clean up and be a lot nicer. So I would like to see the parking lot separated from the residents.
Are you requesting a wall or a fence?
A wall, which is what staff asked for. Well, actually, I think staff made a mistake. Staff, staff, no offense. I stopped, I talked with Brad Parish, and he had originally put a wall. I said, really, I said, this is, there's not a lot of room for foundations and everything else, and we're going to be encroaching into the setbacks that will get the variances. I said, how about an opaque fence? He said, that's fine. I don't think he rewrote the staff report, because if you look at the conditions, it says a fence, an interior property boundaries to screen the proposed use from the adjacent properties. So it was our understanding that only a fence was being recommended by staff. So no offense to Mr. Parish or to staff. But, I mean, it.
There's a great deal of difference in expense in wall or fence.
There is, and, and if you see, I mean, that's, the retention's going to be in the back, so there is going, the retention is going to always stay in the back, in the south end. It's just a matter of whether or not we can get the variances, because that concept plan, you'll see that there is a, the retention is there to the south. Well, yeah, it is to the south, and it's, it's a good stormwater treatment area, and then there's still a setback to it as well. So if this concept plan is approved with setbacks, half of the property to the south is going to be unusable. You're going to have at least a 40-foot buffer to the south with a fence.
If I may, if I may, yeah, but, Ms. Busaka, do you feel that was what Mr. Parish had asked for, a fence rather than a wall?
Yes, I do. I think that Ms. Rosanka has correctly stated how those two things became different.
Is that sufficient for you?
I'm really hoping that that area becomes a little nicer. I know that Park and Recreation is talking about redoing Blanton Park. And I, I, I just hate to see, excuse me for saying this, but a tacky opaque fence separating the parking lot from the residence. That's just my opinion.
I, I had read that it was a fence, and now we're talking about a wall, and again, it's a, a, a whole different thing.
Correct.
In expense. Okay, any other questions?
No.
Uh, member Jordan?
Yeah, I, I guess I'm taking a different tack. I, I don't have a problem with the fence. It looks like to me, and I'm not familiar with this area, actually, I just passed by the, the Garden Street. I don't go down the other streets, but it looks like those two buildings are apartments, are duplexes, if you will, because it's got two driveways in there, so they look like duplexes. I can't figure out what that other one is, that's, you know, that's adjacent to it. I don't know if it's just a, a single-family resident, or it could be another duplex, but it doesn't look wide enough. I guess I'm just being nosy here. Is this just to have parking for the building up front?
Yes, sir.
There's no new development or anything? It's just, they, they don't have enough space?
They don't have enough space. The medical supply company takes up the 18 spaces that they have.
Okay.
So, and, and that was always the intent. What they purchased it was to put parking there.
Okay. Because, you know, I, I can see, I, I don't like the, the no overnight parking to, to me. How, how do you get someone to not park? You know, you're going to have to call court enforcement, and I think, they don't work 24 hours a day, so I don't see how.
I don't think it's enforceable.
Yeah, I, I don't think it is, and I don't, I don't see where there's a requirement. It might be a, a nicety for some, but I don't see where that's going to do anything for anyone. And, and I really don't have a problem with the fence, whether it's a fence or, you know, you can have a ugly concrete block wall also, you know? And I would think that the developer or the, or the owner, he's not going to go all out and put a fancy wall up there, you know, because it costs money, you know? And, and I don't see where he's going to make any money by putting this parking space there, except to help the tenants out there. So I don't see where, if he's going to raise the rent or something like that, so.
If I could, this might help the discussion, or it may not. It says, along Granus Street and all interior property lines, there should be a minimum five-foot landscape buffer. So the, there will be a buffer in addition to either a fence or a wall, which could make a difference in the, the way it's going. I mean, I think it will make a difference in the way it's going to look.
Member Stokel?
Yep, thank you. You mentioned a concept map. Do you have that, that shows the parking spots?
Right, it's the last, it's page.
What page is that? Because I cannot find that.
It's the last, it's next to last. It's right before the notice of publication, 274 of 349.
274. Okay, I see. Hang on. Mine's blown up a little bit.
So that's, that's where the rear setback is.
Okay, I'm seeing it.
And, and they're not proposing to change that setback by variance. They want to change the one against Orange Street.
Okay, so, okay, thank you for pointing this out.
I'm sorry, I thought you got.
No, this is very helpful. It was blown up, so I was like, I had no idea what that was at first. Okay, so do you have any idea what this parcel, 43.4, is?
No, I think there is a house there.
A house, okay.
I don't, I don't know if it's a duplex or, or.
Okay, so there's something there, but.
At P&amp;Z, someone mentioned there is a structure there under the trees, and I'm not familiar. I drove by there, but I didn't think to look.
Okay, so I'm not really worried about the, um, by the stormwater treatment area. I think that's fine. It looks like it'd be a 10-foot setback to where they would pull in for parking off of Granus. Okay, and then where would the fence be, looking at this?
The fence would be along the interior side setbacks and the rear setbacks.
Okay.
And wherever else, yeah.
And then the landscape buffer on the outside?
I don't know if it's on the outside or the inside, but what, whatever code requires us to do would be done.
Question, if I could.
Yeah.
You, the applicant said that you were going to request variances to the setbacks.
To the Orange Street setback.
But you're not going to request a variance to the required landscape buffer, is that correct?
Well, we're, we're going to have to for Orange Street. We won't have enough space.
Okay, so I just, I want council to understand that if that were put into this as a requirement, then I am not sure that the Board of Adjustment and Appeals could vary that, because that's direction of council. I'm sure that Attorney Broom will help me if I'm wrong there. Otherwise, the Board of Adjustment then would make a final decision as to those widths if there were a variance requested.
So you're saying if we approve this as is, there would still need to be additional variances that would go to Board of Adjustments and Appeals?
Yes, because they can't get those 33 spaces that you see in that plan without a variance.
Gotcha. Okay, and if we don't approve this, what are they able to do right now?
22 spaces.
Which are to the right?
It would probably be in a very similar configuration.
Would it eliminate the top portion, I guess, like the L side, the handicap parking and to the right of that, I'm guessing? So they'd just be able to do what's to the right?
I, I, I just don't recall. I've seen, I don't recall what it looks like. It's still going to have the 20-foot rear setback and the side interior setbacks.
Okay.
And the. I think my point was that if you feel that there's a minimum landscaping that should be included in this, then you should make that a condition of this approval if you decide to approve it. Because without any minimum requirement set by this council, the Board of Adjustment and Appeals can make whatever choice they want. And to go over this again, on Orange Street, there should be a minimum of a 15-foot landscape buffer. buffer. Along Robbins Avenue, there should be a 20-foot buffer where no parking or stormwater retention is located. And along Granus Avenue and all interior property lines, there should be a minimum of five-foot landscape buffer. So, for instance, if, let's say, council were to think that that five-foot buffer is the minimum, then I would include that in the conditions of the CUP, so the Board of Adjustment understands that should they choose to give a variance, they can give no more than what would result in a five-foot buffer. Have I confused everyone now? Excellent. I've done my job.
I guess my last question, Peggy, would be, so if we were to do nothing, would they be able to develop this top portion of where this resident or duplex, whatever that is, right, right there for them to turn in off of Granus? Would they still be allowed to do that?
I think it would be very difficult based on...
That's what I'm thinking, too.
...the size of the parking and the turning and the area where they'd have to do their driveway.
Okay. I guess, counsel, where I'm going at with this is, I'm with Member Jordan on, I don't think the overnight parking, I think we either approve it or we don't approve it. I don't think the overnight parking matters at that point. I guess my concern is, and I'm kind of upset that this person's not here, and I don't know who owns this. If that was my property, and all of a sudden, I'm used to all this vegetation and trees and nothing there, and then all of a sudden, this pops up, I just don't want to blindside someone. But I know we've sent out notices and we haven't heard anything, so I don't have a problem with it. My only issue would be potential of whoever's living there, just having that just kind of pop up like that. I don't know. Those are just my thoughts.
Ms. Busaka, do we have parking lots of this size anywhere else in our city off of a beaten path, meaning off of Highway 50, along Rose Hill, or off of Garden Street over here on Orange Street? Go ahead.
Before the change to the code, these parking lots were permitted. In the urban mixed-use district, they had to actually be part of another piece of, they have to be adjacent to the property that they were serving, which is why this change was made, because this is actually separated by a road from the commercial property. I can't tell you with a great certainty that those do or do not exist. I can tell you that this is a tight lot, and getting all of the requirements for buffering, the size of the parking spaces, the turning radiuses, all that, is a challenge, because they're required to have stormwater retention. So this is a tight lot.
I see the need for the business, for the parking, and I think I recall that before. And so I'm not overly concerned that it's not on the area. They have no worry to put a parking spot. So to benefit of them, I see that need. And the more I look at this, though, and we talked about a wall, we've talked about the fence, we're in some, we're not very far away from some difficult parts of town there. And to put a parking lot right there, and then if we did put a wall where people can kind of get behind them, I have some concerns about a parking lot right there, especially if I'm not house under the woods, under the trees. Again, I'm a little perplexed about this whole situation. I digress back to the need for the business. I just think that a parking lot that's, it's not on Garden Street, it's not on US 1, it's not on Highway 50, it's on Orange and Granus, and it's in a sometimes difficult part of town, and I just get concerned about envisioning a hangout at certain times of night, et cetera. So those are my concerns.
Member Jordan?
I was just looking at the drawing, and I'm in agreement that it's probably going to be pretty tight when you turn off of Granus. But just to help the attorney a little bit, I think that it looks like about 22 parking spaces once you pass the handicap area. If you just keep going in there, you've got about 22, 23 parking spaces that you have there. This, most of this area is being taken up by the stormwater. So in actuality, you know, you're talking about putting fence up and all that stuff. It's going to be a lot of clear area there, right? Because it's stormwater. So he's taking the majority of his, I wouldn't say a majority, but a lot of his area just for stormwater, and then he's going to have some extra parking spaces. I don't see where it's going to be a big impact to the area, but I think I'm with Member Stokel, it just would be nice to know what's underneath those trees, you know? It just, I don't want to impact someone because there is some kind of house or something, but I don't know if that house is even habitable, and I don't know anything. So I guess we have to go with what we have in front of us. And I would suggest that we go ahead and approve the plan. She's got a lot more work to do, because she's going to have to get a variance to even get these extra parking spaces in there, and I'm sure there'll be some ups and downs along the way, in my opinion.
Mr. Busher?
Yeah, I'm done. Thank you, sir.
I kind of go along with what he just said. We're trying to think for somebody who we don't know, and we don't know if they care, and we gave them opportunity, and they didn't show up, and they may not have a problem with it. So I'm not sure why we have to protect them when we don't even know them. They haven't made an effort to come forth, but, so that's a problem. The second part, I agree with the Vice Mayor, that has troubled me on this, that it could become a hangout. Would your client consider putting a restrictive fence around it that would be closed off at night?
I know that we have discussed it, but I don't have authorization to say he's going to do it. But he's going to protect his property and those of his tenants, so I don't know what he plans to do.
We got pictures up there now. They found them, I guess.
What is that? There is a house there.
Is that a house? Looks like it's a garage.
It's a garage.
There's a garage on the left, and there's a house on the right.
Oh, I see something. Yeah, the yellow thing there.
So what's on the left there? With that white?
That's a garage. It's a freestanding garage.
That's a garage.
No, to, like, the very left. Oh, there we go. Okay. Yes. I guess he's helpful. Yeah. I don't think anyone lives there.
Well, there seems to be some sort of fence around there.
Go to the other.
Chain link.
Okay, right there.
Is he really driving?
Need your mics.
Oh.
What did he say?
He said, use your mic.
Use your mic.
We could require, I guess we could, require, I'll ask Peggy, can we require a restrictive fence, like a chain link fence, to keep it from becoming a hangout?
Well, we won't allow chain link.
Okay.
But you could require a fence, and then the code will determine what kind.
How about electric? Can we do that now?
No, we'd prefer not.
Can you get a variance to the chain link? Because I don't think you want a walled-off area that no one can see in either. I mean, a chain link, I think, would make sense, or picket fence or something.
Can we?
When you're looking at a conditional use permit, the reason it's conditional use is there'd be some nuisances associated with that use that you evaluate and determine, do you need to require any conditions to help abate those nuisances that may be produced through this use? So you do have the ability to look at this and impose conditions, provided there's a relationship or nexus between that condition and the nuisance being created, then it also must be in proportion as well. So there must be a justification for your condition based on the nuisance that you're trying to abate. It cannot be arbitrary.
All right, let's make an assumption here, so we can get closer to an answer. The assumption is that there's a possibility to have a hangout, and I think it's a reasonable possibility, being the area as it is now, the position of the lot behind buildings and whatnot, and so I feel it's a legitimate concern. Now, if the rest of the council agreed with that, or the majority of them, what could we require to preclude that? Could it be a chain link fence, or is that because it's against our ordinances, we can't do that either?
You could make a recommendation for a fence, in my opinion. And I'll go back first to the question about can it be varied. If you make a specific condition requirement, that can't be varied by the BAA, they can vary the code. But council should follow your code. If you want to require a fence, it should be in compliance with the code. It should not violate the code.
So it's, yes, we could do it, but we shouldn't.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Is the intent that you can look through the fence because you're concerned that you want to see it?
In part, but more than that, it should be able to be locked up at night to keep people from hanging out in there. And that doesn't necessarily have to be a chain link fence. It has to be something strong enough to keep...
Something with a gate.
Yeah, with a gate and lock it off.
Because if the concern is you want to be able to look through it, then you might be able to come up with some, I mean, we'd be happy to come back to you with what kind of fence that would meet the code that you could look through. I was thinking, and I hate to do this stuff on the fly, but there may be some options that we could work out with the applicant that you could address your issues. If the issue is you want it locked with a gate, then that...
On the gate, the gate could be chain link. So we wouldn't, we'd be able to see in it, but the rest of it could be closed off. But an officer in a car going past would be able to look inside to see that nobody's cut the chain and is inside. So it doesn't have to be all chain link, is what I'm saying. So how do we, how do we, how do we go, oh, look, we have other speakers. Look what I've done. Well, we can do that, though. I mean, at this point, we can make that, we can make it as a recommendation and pass everything else. We should know that beforehand, so...
As I remember the code, chain link fences are not permitted.
What about chain link gates?
I would tend to think that the gate and the fence would have to be the same material.
I don't make that conclusion, but let's see what everybody else has to say. Member Jordan?
No, I did not. She wanted to go before me, but I said, I mean, I like what she's about to say.
Please, please, please.
I totally disagree with the way we're going, and I'll tell you why. Because I'm thinking about my property where I have my business, and you could drive behind that. Now you're telling me, the city's telling me that I need to put up a fence to ensure that someone that I may not want on the property go on the property. I don't want to do that. You're asking me to spend money that I don't want to spend. There is an assumption, and I understand where Member Nelson is, because there's something new about to go there, but I, just with property rights and everything, I just, I'm feeling very uncomfortable with us telling people how to operate their business. They're asking for a way to put a new parking lot in an area, and I think with the conditional use they're asking for, I think they're being reasonable. Now we're talking about the next thing, you know, you're going to say, put a fence up, and then you're going to say, put alarm on the fence and all this stuff. And I just think we're going too far with this.
Again, I hate to do this, but, Mr. Broom, is there a way to revoke a conditional use permit if it becomes a nuisance?
There is a process to revoke a CUP.
I guess my point is, if this were to become a nuisance in the community, there is a process by which that can be addressed by the property owner, or should the council feel that the property owner has not adequately addressed the nuisance, there may be other alternatives.
Yeah, so the bottom line to me is, we're coming up with a solution for a problem that we don't have.
Which, can I interrupt you?
Sure.
For a second, and it has to do with your thing. Can we pass it without a fence, and if there is a problem, then require a fence?
No, sir. When we're addressing...
Looking for solutions.
Right. When we're dealing with CUP and the conditions really needs to be based on the facts presented to the board. Once you grant the CUP, I, no, I don't see where the council can request, require them to come back to add conditions after you've already evaluated.
Okay.
Now, I think you need to impose the conditions based on the nuisances, based on the facts presented to you tonight. If you're not ready to do that, and you want to think about it more, you certainly table the item if you want to consider it longer and do that.
Well, let's hear from the rest. Member Nelson?
I seem to be hanging out a lot at this one little house on Blanton and Granus. And I will say...
You've got to stop that hanging out.
I know, I know. And I'm doing a lot of sweating, too, by the way. But I actually watch drug deals on that street. And they don't even care who's watching, and they are hanging out in this area. A friend of mine stopped the other day to see what was going on, and he was offered a woman. So there's crimes going on here. I mean, you know, there's stuff going on on this street.
You have property in that area, don't you, up on Garden Street?
I have property on Garden Street. I don't normally hang out on Granus.
No, no, no. I'm not asking that. I know you have property in that area, though, so...
Yeah, but it's a couple blocks away. We don't have those, we don't have those problems.
I'm giving you an excuse for being there.
This is, that's the area that we've been working on to build a boys' and girls' club.
Oh, is it?
It is. That's the house right there. And so I will say that the officer showed up one day to see what was going on, and we ended up with four patrol cars there, and we didn't see anybody for a week. But on a daily basis, you go, and they are out in the street selling drugs.
So you feel there's already an existing problem?
I think there's an existing problem there. I'm hoping that we move in and they'll move out, but I don't know.
Okay. Are you, anything else you have to say? You'd like to say?
I sort of think maybe tabling it would be appropriate.
Let's see, we have other lights. Member Stokel?
Okay, so first off, thank you to Curtis in the back, because now I just Googled it, and this map, now that I'm getting familiar with it, has been kind of helpful. So it looks like, from what I found, people are already parking there anyway. So I see several cars, at least on Google Maps right now, that they're just parking right there. I don't know where exactly, what I'm confused by thoroughly, but regardless, I think I'd actually, at this point, be in favor of going ahead and approving it. I don't know how you guys are going to have enough room to do it, because it looks like this resident or their detached garage is so close, I don't know how you guys are going to get the buffers. I think that's what Peggy was talking about with the variances. I don't see how it's possible to build this entire parking lot, as seen, looking at least at this Google image. But seeing that they're already parking there, on this map at least, and hearing you guys talking about, you know, kind of what's happening over there, maybe, I'm hopeful that the parking lot maybe actually will help a little bit. And it sounds like you said you guys are planning to do a fence?
I know we've talked about it. I don't know exactly what the plans are.
Okay. I guess at that point, I'm not really too concerned. I feel like if it's an issue, even the resident can put up a fence if they felt they needed to. Again, seeing these cars parking there already, some, I don't know. I'm more open to it now, I just don't really see how it's going to be feasible, but I'm okay with it at this point.
Vice Mayor?
Well, since I was the first one to bring up the concern about the safety issue and all that, simply because of the, quite honestly, my 35 years at Titus High School tells me what areas in that area could be an issue. And that could be an issue. But it's not issue enough for me to say to the business owner, because I see what you're trying to do, and I get it. You guys need parking, it's right there, but I can't, for the life of me, think of an area in our town where we have parking where you really can't see it from a main road. And if, you know, and then if you're going to light it up real well, you've got issues with the people living there. So I do have some concerns, and I hope we can work that all out. Something that comes to mind for me is whenever we have a Parks and Rec meeting and we get a report, I can tell you that we have a real problem with Stewart Park and vandalism. And the reason I say that is it comes to mind as the closest thing I can think of, where it's an open area, but it's, there's nothing, you don't, there's nobody driving by, there's no traffic, and so no matter what they do out there, and Jeff Davis would attest to this, no matter what they do out there, they've burnt, you know, wooden... what they do out there, they've burnt, you know, wooden, slingshot stuff down, they've, so it's, and again, I don't want to overemphasize that issue, but it comes to mind that this is kind of out of the way, too. There's nobody, at night, unless there's something bad going on, there's not a lot of traffic going down Granus and Orange Avenue. So I still have that concern, but I won't let it stand in the way of approving that for the parking, but I think it's something we're going to deal with down the road.
Well, I see no more lights, but, so what was already mentioned, that we, we could table this, so you would have opportunity to talk to your client before we make a motion. And they may have a whole different view on it for somewhere, I don't know, but at least they'd have the opportunity to talk to you about it.
I thought you had other cards that came up.
Hmm?
I thought you had other cards that were delivered to you while we were talking. No?
I don't know.
Okay, I misunderstood. All right.
Do we have other cards?
No.
No. Okay. You know, I would prefer a condition be placed in the conditional use, that if it becomes a nuisance, is it can be subject to being revoked? I don't know if it's in your code, or if that's always conditional.
No, no, the revocation, I do it if you don't proceed with your CUP. You know, we have a process for revoking BTRs for not compliance or for nuisance reasons, but not with CUP.
And I'm used to conditions in binding development plans that says if you breach the code, then you have to come back and we can revoke your, so, you know, I think if this becomes a nuisance, there is going to be lighting on the site that's required by your code. It's not supposed to go offsite, it's supposed to stay onsite, it's supposed to illuminate the parking lot, so maybe that would detract people from hanging out there. I don't know if he's putting up a fence, I don't know, I mean, we're putting up the fence on the back, but I, I think if you could put such a condition that if it becomes a nuisance, it's subject to revocation, which would bring us back here and give you the chance to impose more conditions.
I think you said you couldn't do that.
That's a code enforcement issue, in my opinion. If we have conditions that are specifically stated on this property, or violate other codes in addition to these conditions, that's a code enforcement issue. If they continue to violate, then it becomes a daily fine. To the point, if it becomes a nuisance property, there are other procedures we could attempt to follow as far as declaring it a nuisance property.
I've just seen that provision in other CUPs in other jurisdictions, but, so, I mean, I would prefer to go forward, as, I mean, this is now my third hearing for a parking lot. I'd prefer to go forward, but if, if there's a consensus that we need to get...
If you want a greater condition about reevaluating that in a period of time, it could be revoked, but that's...
That would be fine, too. I know we talked about a fence because he doesn't want people parking there when there's no one there. And if, and if he does have employees that are parked there overnight for whatever reason, he doesn't want the cars vandalized. So I, I don't know.
That's one of the issues you don't know, and I can understand that, but if we vote tonight, you're going to take what you got, and if we don't, if we...
Right.
Then you have opportunity to talk to your client. It's kind of in your court. But I do have another person to speak.
Yes, my reference is...
Light.
Sorry. Rather than create an issue for Mr. Broome down there, that we postpone it for two weeks and give you the chance to come back, talk to staff, come back. I see potential problems in there. I'm not sure what the solution is. The overnight parking really doesn't bother me. I mean, if there's somebody there, they get stuck there, whatever, that part doesn't bother me. But I see problems because of the neighborhood you're, you're going into, and I don't want to give my friends down the road a new place to hang out.
All right, that's fine. Then we'll accept tabling for two weeks and work with staff and check with my client.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'm tired.
And what is that date?
No, I'm good.
What is that date?
I'll get it for you in a second.
Yeah, 13th.
That's like three weeks? That's fine.
Yeah, there's a skip week in there.
All right, that's fine.
Yep.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favors, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item.
This is item 10A, and this is a first reading. Richard?
Yes, this is Riverwalk Apartments Plan Development Rezoning Application Number 1 2019 and Ordinance Number 25 2019. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number 7 2019 by amending the master plan and the conditions of the plan development PD zoning district imposed for certain properties approximately 21.03 acres in size, having parcel ID numbers 22, 35, 26, 00, 504, and 22, 35, 26, 00, 508, located on the east side of US Highway 1, approximately one half mile south of the intersection of US Highway 1 and River Edge Drive, and providing for an effective date.
This is the first reading of ordinance 25 2019. The public hearing is scheduled to be conducted by the City Council on August 13, 2019. Mr. Bisac is available to answer any questions that you may have, and I do believe we have some cards.
Mr. Bisac, do you have any comments?
I was just going to wait for the public hearing.
Counsel, any questions for staff? Clerk, go ahead and call the cards, please.
Rodney Honeycutt.
Why don't you get on a microphone there?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, Council. Rodney Honeycutt, 3700 South Washington Avenue, here in Titusville. So we are requesting to amend the master plan to shift the buildings around. There's no increase in density. It's the first reading, so if there are any questions, I'm glad to...
Anyone have any questions? Yes, ma'am. Oh, wait a minute, Member Jordan, you were first.
Oh, it came up. Are you moving it around to save the trees? You should say yes. You're a hero.
Well, I have to tell the truth, the answer is no.
No, okay.
Member Nelson?
Well, okay, I have questions, and I'm not sure who gets to answer, but it seems like when, I don't, I don't have a problem with the changes, but my question was, they're talking about a conservation easement, and I think that was supposed to be in conservation and not specifically an easement. Do you recall? And there was a wall...
Well, what?
And there was a wall back there, not a fence.
So the wall, not a fence, is not a, not a item. We've agreed to a wall. So you must have watched the P&amp;Z meeting, and so this is about the third or fourth time we've came in to rezon this property. It stays the same zone, it just changes the master plan or something. So the, the buffer area to the rear, no, to the east for River Edge Drive...
Right.
That the neighbors have asked. Originally, it said it was approved as a conservation easement, and the last time it didn't say that. It just said a buffer area, and so citizens were wanting it to be a conservation easement. I think, and Peggy Bisac can address this, I think staff's reason they didn't say a conservation easement is an easement, you have a grantee and a grantor, and there's no grantee. Nobody wants to take the conservation easement, because that takes liability on.
Right.
But we agree to leave the buffer just like we always have, and a wall.
So what would be the appropriate designation for that, Ms. Bisac?
What the council decided at the last meeting was to, and I have their minutes in front of me, was to approve the rezoning and did not mention the conservation easement. The citizens who had asked for the conservation easement said they understood that an easement had to be in favor of someone, and they would sort it out.
What does that mean?
What's that mean? I, I didn't say that, so I can't describe to you what... So what the staff did was to follow the words that the council directed us to do. What the applicant did was to provide us with a plan that was what they promised. So they put something, as, as I see it, they put something in writing that they felt they had made a promise to the neighbors, but it was over and above that which the council directed as part of their motion.
So I should be quiet at this point, right?
I have no idea what to tell you on that.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions from council? City staff, any comments on this? Okay. Clerk, are there any other cards on this item?
Yes, sir. One more card, Laura Ward.
Ms. Ward.
Laura Ward, River Edge. I, I don't really think I want to say anything. I...
You don't have to, ma'am.
Yeah, I just don't know for sure yet whether we have a buffer that's going to be enforceable some way or not. I, I don't know yet whether we do or not.
Okay.
So do I ask somebody?
You will have opportunity at the next meeting.
Okay, I'd be happy to. We can talk some more with Rodney. Thank you.
Any other cards?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we don't need to vote on that, that's the end of that item. Next item.
Next item is 10B, which is ordinance number 26 2019, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending Chapter 34 Procedures of the Land Development Regulations to establish community engagement requirements for specified development options, specifically amending Sections 3422 Required Information Exhibits, 3439 Submittals, 3455 Master Plan Submittal, and 34395 Procedure for Application of Development Agreement, and creating Section 3413 Community Engagement, providing for severability repeal of conflicting ordinances for an effective date and for incorporation into the code.
This is the first read of ordinance 26 2019. Public hearing is scheduled to be conducted by City Council on August 13, 2019, beginning at 6:30. Ms. Bisac is available to answer questions that you may have on this first read.
Any questions for Mr. Bisac? I see none. Clerk, are there any cards on this item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this does not require a vote. Next item is old business and new business, 12A.
Bonding of Improvements of Antigua Bay. Code Section 34164 states that upon approval of a preliminary plat for a subdivision, the subdivider shall exercise one or two options prior to submitting the final plat: install all required site improvements, or prepare a detailed cost breakdown and specifications for all required site improvements which meet the approval of the city and provide performance bond or escrow agreement acceptable to the city in the amount of 120% of the site construction costs to guarantee the installation of required improvements. Sunbelt Land Development, the developer of Antigua Bay, has requested the city consider accepting a surety, either a performance bond or an escrow bond, to allow these improvements prior to the final plat approval. There are several issues that council should consider that are listed in your packet. Ms. Bisac is available to answer any questions that you may have.
Ms. Bisac, any comments at this point?
I'll just answer any questions you have.
Okay, any questions? We will be back to you. I'll open the public hearing. Are there cards on this item, clerk?
Yes, sir, two cards. Kristy Mount.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kristy Mount. Address is 1702 South Washington Avenue. I represent the developer, Antigua Bay, and we're here on a procedural matter for the purpose of the council, approving the form of surety for the required project infrastructure improvements, either through the use of a performance bond or through an escrow agreement. Based on our impressions, it appears that the city would prefer the use of a performance bond, and Antigua Bay fully supports the use of that performance bond as surety, and we would look forward to your decision on the matter so that we can continue to move forward on the project. I have Graham Allen with Antigua Bay is here, as well as Jake Wise, the project engineer.
Okay, any questions at this point? I see no questions. There any other cards on this item?
Yes, sir, Jake Wise.
Questions only? Okay. Any, any questions with Mr. Wise? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. What's, well, we opened the public hearing, and I guess we did that, right? There's no more speakers, all cards are called. Counsel, discussion. I'll start it off. They're agreeing to what I had asked at the original meeting. The reason being, just so everybody's clear on it, there are two forms of surety. One is escrow, where, well, yeah, maybe more than three, but, one is escrow, where you give the money plus 20% to the bank, and the problem with that is, the money is there, and if it defaults for any reason, bankruptcy or anything else, the money is there, but it may or may not cover what is needed. But even if it does, the city becomes the developer at that point, has to go out and finish the project. The, the performance bond is, requires a company that, a well-established company, and there's certain degrees of companies that do this, and we would ask for the most reliable type of degree, or degree. And then they're responsible for continuing with the contract, and we don't get into any court cases or anything else, which I would not like to see the city have. So as they're agreeing to it, I think we're on the same page as somebody said. So with that, Vice Mayor.
Just to reiterate what you said, I, in my short learning curve on these, these issues, I appreciate moving with the bond issue, and I appreciate you guys working with us on that. Apparently, this is not something you do all the time, and it took some effort to get it done. But I think that, I can only speak for myself, although Mayor did as well, and that is that we're very comfortable with the bond situation, and keep it at escrow. And the other thing I would simply add to that is, I know that for myself, this is the most exciting project I've seen in a long time, and as I got to share with you earlier, you know, the sooner the shovel hits the dirt, the more excited I will be. So I appreciate that. I'm glad you guys are helpful, and thank you, Mayor, for that clarification.
You did say keep it with a performance bond, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. I heard the word escrow in there.
Well, the escrow was, we want to stay away from that.
Right. Okay, okay. That's, that's good. And I do, too. I think the project is great. I have no problem with the project, and we want to help you in any, any way we can to get the project started and completed, but I don't want to put the city at any risk in the future, so, and that's my job, to keep that away.
I want to make sure that's what I'm saying, too.
No misunderstanding of that.
Okay. Member Jordan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Certainly appreciate having a meeting with the attorney, who I know, and my new friend here. I think this is a really exciting project, for sure. It's definitely a great location. I think what really touched me was the fact that when someone signs a contract to buy that land, very expensive land out there, that, you know, they're going to be able to, to build, and the infrastructure is going to be there, and that's the most important thing to me. We are not in the business of, of developing land at all, and we don't need to be in the business of doing that, so the performance, performance bond is actually the right way to go. The escrow would, it could get you in a lot of trouble, especially if they go bankrupt, because everybody wants a piece of the money, if, if that's all they have, for sure. So I'm looking forward for us to approve this, and this job starts, and see some nice, large pieces of property get sold to the right type of people, for sure, so looking forward for it. It won't be me, though. Can't afford it.
City Attorney.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to point out for council, as you're aware, the options we talk about is escrow agreement or a bond. Our code, which was written some time ago, specifically talks about a bond, performance bond being rated AA, AA, in best insurance guides, four As. That, as I see, that doesn't really exist now in best rating guides. The highest ratings I see under best insurance rating is a superior rating or an A+. You can get a notation of an additional plus, A++. I'm not sure who has that. But I did speak with our purchasing department, and, and they certainly agree that a superior rating is an acceptable bond rating. I just wanted to let you know that if council's agreeable, I, I would say, to the extent a four A rating exists, that's fine, but if it doesn't, that you would accept a superior rating from a best... But if it doesn't, that you would accept a superior rating from Best Insurance Guide.
And we would look at that company very carefully, right? I mean, whatever company they come forward, we would ascertain their position and rating.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I just wanted to be real specific that when they call that four A rating out, and if it doesn't exist, I want to make sure that a comparable would be the superior rating, I believe, and we would look at that.
Understood. Is there anything else? Where do we go from here?
What we would like is a motion that the type of performance bond, this type of surety you want, which I think is a performance bond. What will happen is the preliminary plat will be approved administratively, and then the applicant will request that a final plat come in. And that will be reviewed by this council. At that time, the staff will have that bond so that it will be available, and you'll know exactly the amount of the bond, and you'll know the company that the bond is with. They will also be recommendation from the staff that some notes be put on the plat so that there's no confusion about the fact that there is not yet infrastructure in, but it will be available. And all of that will be part of that plat. Once counsel then approves that plat, then the developer can move forward to put the infrastructure in, sell the lots, do their development. But I just wanted you to know that no dirt will turn until you have approved that final plat.
Okay, so we're just approving the performance bonds?
We're just, you're not even approving the bond. You're just approving the type of surety so that the applicant can come forward and put all of that together. So when the final plat's ready for approval, so will everything else be ready.
Okay. Member Jordan?
I want to make the motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Move that we approve a performance bond for the applicant.
Would the surety be a performance bond?
Yes.
That's what I thought I heard you say.
Yeah, that's what I said. And should we say anything about the superior, with the bond being a superior?
Right. What the code requires is that they provide a performance and material and labor payment bond at 120% of the site construction cost. And that it would be acceptable to accept an A+ superior rating, according to Best Insurance Guide.
What he said?
That's what he said, yeah. That's my motion.
That's the motion.
Thank you.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Thank you for your patience this evening. All right, where are we? We're almost done, gang. Here we go. Petitions and requests from the public present. I see two people sitting out there. You just watching? Okay. Mayor and counsel reports. You have my report. Counsel, is there anybody from, that has anything? No? Okay.
Yeah, I got a couple, one thing.
Okay.
Well, maybe two things. But one of the things is, and we talked about it a couple of weeks ago, is the stoplight at Highway 50 and Barna, which, since I drive that every day, is scary to me. And I'll just leave it at that. There's no turn arrow coming down Barna, going south to turn left. So you're kind of in a guessing game. And I was telling the city manager just yesterday, I was out in the middle of Highway 50, and I couldn't make my turn because there's a big truck sitting over there. I couldn't see around it. So I finally said, okay, let's go. And so we took off and we made it. That being said, we, and city manager, you can get this straight for me, but the bottom line is when you turn something over to the Florida Department of Transportation, they'll approve it, but to get it done takes a long time. And so the city, with city manager's guidance, I am sure, has stepped up and requested the equipment, maybe it's more the lights, et cetera. And we're going to put it in. And, you know, I felt like that really need to be noted here that instead of waiting on the bureaucracy and waiting for a tragedy there, because that seems to be when you get a light put up, city manager and staff have stepped up, and our people are going to do the work. And city manager, if you want to clarify a little bit more of that, that's great.
Yes, sir. We have the equipment on hand. The signal box will be put in tomorrow, and then the light will be put in towards the end of the week.
You have.
That is awesome.
About six years.
That is awesome.
Because I couldn't even get a "don't litter" sign put up years ago. And then several times out here on the road, we wanted to increase the size of the signs. They wouldn't let us do it, even.
Thank you, city manager.
I don't know what string you pull, but save that string.
Yes, sir. That's huge. I mean, that's life-saving, and I can tell you because I drive there every day. And the second thing, and I'm not sure, Member Stokoe may say something as well, but I did get to see in my box the, what is that, the Brevard Business Newspaper? Member Jordan on the front with Viera High School, not Viera High School, excuse me, Viera Charter School, Viera Charter School's team. I'm not as familiar with the other people as I was you. And I just know from being in education for many years and then dealing with charter situations, I think that's certainly a Bravo, A-school type of stuff, building, expanding. And if you want to expand upon that, you certainly, you know, I'll turn it over to you. But I'd be remiss if I didn't say something. And again, being an educator my entire life, and probably will be till the day I die, I wanted to say congratulations and a job well done down there.
Absolutely. And that's it. City manager, anything else, sir?
Sir, nothing, no action items, just the calendar for the budget. And we're looking forward to getting the budget hammered out and get on going for 220.
Right. City Attorney, anything? I think we have completed the process. I declare this meeting adjourned.